The Village Committee of the Whole for November 2nd, 2021, I call this meeting to order and ask that the board please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes, here.
Gansey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Sawansee?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We have a couple of items on our committee meeting this evening, both under building and zoning. Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's two items on our agenda tonight. The first one is the liquor store located at 955 Route 59. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to sell packaged beer, wine, and liquor, and a proposed liquor store to be located at 955 South Route 59 in a B3 neighborhood shopping zoning district. The Plan Commission reviewed the petitioner's request and can deduct a required public hearing at their meeting, and they recommended approval of this request. Due to the concerns of adjacent residents, the Plan Commission, at the Plan Commission meeting, staff reached out to the petitioner to discuss reducing the store's hours. So the store's hours are reduced to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. midnight on Friday and Saturday, rather than the hours associated with the original request of a Class C liquor license. With that, does any of the committee members have any comments or concerns?
Does anyone, do we know the suburbia liquors? Do we know the hours for suburbia liquors?
They are 10 o'clock Monday through Thursday and 11:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday.
And that's the one that's right behind Walgreens?
That is over on 59, yes.
Behind Walgreens, yeah. What time do they open?
Um, I don't have that information.
Don't think they open at 8.
So I'm not, I'm not sure if you heard, but staff reached out the next day after the meeting, and, and the, we have worked with the petitioner, and he is reducing his store hours. Did you, did you hear that? Okay, okay, okay. So they are going to apply for a Class C liquor license rather than the extended, and those hours are 10 o'clock during the week and then midnight on Friday and Saturday. Okay?
Ms. Grill, is there any way we could get a rendering of the front of a liquor store and what it's going to look like before we vote on it at the next meeting?
You would like a rendering of the sign?
Yeah, like how the storefront is going to, to look.
They have not applied for a sign permit at this time?
Okay.
How about anything with the type of lighting? Because sometimes like those LED lights are really bright, and if it's on that late, it lights up like the entire area.
Again, the, it's, I don't think they're proposing, it's the actual property owner is responsible for the lighting. We haven't had any kind of build-out permit yet or any kind of changes to lighting at this time.
Okay.
But we, we can keep an eye out on that, absolutely.
All right, any other questions?
I would just try to figure out, I know the, some of the issues that residents have are the store usage. Has there been any other petitioners? I mean, this thing's been around for a long time, and it's still a build-out, right? There's never been anything in there.
Well, it's formerly the travel agency.
Oh, that's right. Is there any other things that we are aware of that we could actually put, that the owner could put in the store? How many square feet is it?
It's not very big. I want to say 2,000 square feet.
1,400?
Might even be smaller than that, yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's multiple uses that could go in there. This is the one that, what they're applying for.
Yeah.
Are the petitioners here?
Yes, he is here.
So my question to the petitioners would be, the neighbors are concerned that this establishment is, is going to be low quality. What can you, what can you tell us about what you're going to do here?
We, we have one store in Oak Brook, and I don't think so it is going to be a very low quality, because the product we're going to keep, that will attract the very good neighborhoods and all those people. We're not going to have any, like, onsite serving or anything, so we're not going to have any those kind of people coming in. And beside the liquor, we also going to have, like, certain items that we discussed with the village before, like, you know, convenience item, like eggs, milk, bread, all those kind of stuff. And we have given them plan as the village required, so we'll try to make it the very best quality.
Are you going to specialize in some type of beverage or, you know, liquor, or is it going to be kind of a general purpose?
No, we more like to be in the wine section and the whiskey side.
Okay. And you're not planning on having any sort of big flashing lights in the windows? It's not going to look like lots of-
No, even our current store doesn't have it.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think Oak Brook would put up with that.
No.
No.
We're not interested in those kind of things, and our current store in Oak Brook, that doesn't have those kind of lights or anything.
How, how big is the Oak Brook store?
That is about 2,500 square feet.
Okay. And how long have you been operating that one?
Since 2018.
18?
Yeah.
Do you plan to open at 8:00 in the morning?
We really don't need to at 8:00. We can open at 10:00.
But you're not going to stay open until 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah, we, we can go with the, whatever the village recommends. Because our current store is open in the weekend till 2:00, and in the weekday till midnight.
That's in Oak Brook? That's how the hours are there?
In Oak Brook.
Yeah.
And we don't force for any particular hours. We can go with whatever works best with the neighbors and village.
I think it would make the most sense, if, if, if the store looks nice when you see a rendering and everything else, if you stuck to the hours of the regular stores that are around there, the other liquor stores. So like a closing at 11:00 on Friday and Saturday, yeah. But that would be my opinion.
I agree.
If that's the case, why don't we just make 11:00 all week, all, all through the week? What do we have for other stores?
Class C is 10:00 during the week.
Yeah.
And then midnight on the weekend.
Yeah. You can make the adjustment for the weekend, I guess. Um, just another, one other question, I guess, because of the neighbors in the back, I'm sure you're loading everything in the back. Is that a morning delivery? Is that like, the trucks when they're coming in, in and out the back of the store?
Oh, it is always a daytime morning delivery.
Always daytime?
Always come like, um, before 4:00.
Okay.
There is, no deliveries comes later than that.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, one last question. What, I'm sorry, trustee Hopkins, what made you pick Bartlett?
Because they're the good neighborhood and peaceful neighborhood. There are so many opportunities to be successful here.
Good answer, I live in that neighborhood. I'll be keeping, I'll be keeping an eye on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back on.
So we'll send this on to the village, we'll send this back on to the village board for a vote then. The next item we have is a proposed text amendment for the massage and bodywork establishments. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Grill to go over this.
Thank you, trustee Hopkins. So tonight, staff is looking for direction from the village board committee concerning massage and bodywork establishments. Currently, these businesses are permitted by right in our commercial districts as a personal service under the zoning ordinance, and staff is seeking direction for the following proposed text amendments. Um, one, um, the first text amendment prohibit, prohibit massage and bodywork establishments in all commercial, industrial, public lands, and planned development zoning districts. Two, it would allow massage and bodywork establishments as accessory uses to certain principal uses. So, um, they would be accessory to a medical facility or, in a hospital, or a physical therapy, chiropractic, physician's office, and a beauty salon. Three, it would permit massage and bodywork establishments by right in the office research district. And four, it would allow massage and bodywork establishments in certain planned development districts or in planned unit developments where office uses are permitted by right or where office uses would be a special use. And, um, this example would be Blue Heron and the Southwind Developments. Both of those development agreements and annexation agreements call out office uses in their proposals. So as a result of these proposed text amendments, the existing establishments currently located in the commercial districts would become non-conforming uses and would have a five-year amortization period within which said uses would then be discontinued. And with that, I'm looking for some feedback.
I just want to make, I want an explanation on this. So Doc Cameron, you know, he's a chiropractor in Streets of Bartlett?
Yes.
Who's doing massage therapy. So under this ordinance, that would still be allowed?
Absolutely, yes.
There would be no sunset clause on this for five years or anything?
No, no, because they would be allowed as an accessory use to the chiropractic office. So any kind of medical facility, um, any kind of therapy, that kind of use would allow for massages in, in their premises.
Well, I thought I understood, but I just wanted to make sure I can prove it correctly.
Does item B, you know, allow one thing and not something else, and, and could there be repercussions on that? You know, different type of massage facilities, like a Massage Envy using that as an example, that would be a special use under this?
No.
It would not?
It would not be permitted in a commercial district.
Not be permitted?
It would not be. It would be, it would only be permitted in an office research district.
Are there different types of licensing for Asian bodyworks versus massage therapy?
Yes, there is.
So it sounds like the root cause of the problem is more of a like, like not having proper license, or not having licensing?
Uh, no, that's not a problem. They, everyone gets a license, and we check that.
But in the incident that is, that brought this up, there were people who weren't licensed, correct? They could not provide licensing?
That is correct. When we check, they are licensed, and then, um, and Brian can probably-
If that's happened, then they aren't licensed.
Yeah, yeah. Brian can probably speak to this a little more in depth, but when they come and apply for their business license, there is a thorough check of the licenses that are issued by the state for, for those services, and background check that is done. What we have discovered is that the people who work in those establishments don't always stay, and the owner may have the appropriate license, but maybe not his employees or her employees. Um, it has been something that is not unique to one establishment. I think we found it in, in most of the ones that we monitor and respond to complaints on. You know, they, they start out just fine, and then we have a problem.
So why are they permitted only in the office research district? What was the thinking behind that?
So you can't just exclude uses altogether. That would be exclusionary zoning.
Right.
Uh, that being said, certain uses can be restricted, uh, but not entirely. So the thinking was that there, for instance, your adult uses are permitted as a right in the industrial district, and the thought was we didn't want to combine this type of use with that type of use when there's no one around. Uh, we have a current massage therapy business in an OR district. It's NET Lab building.
On West Bartlett.
And hip net had not had a problem. The thought is, uh, we think that this would be defensible if it were challenged, in part because of the acreage, in looking at the case law. So there's been a history of problems over the years that I've been involved with, and this isn't all of them, but, you know, 1999, Kim doing businesses, J Spa, 199 East Lake Street, Revacation. 2001, suing, doing businesses, Salon 59, Revacation. That was 1007 West Sterns Road. Cusick, a new owner on the 191 East Lake Street, doing businesses, Q Spa, suspension. All of these suspensions involve charges of prostitution. Depending on the level, suspensions entailed, often they go out of business and do replaces. So that Cusick replaced the original. 2015, done, doing businesses, Zen Spa, suspension. 10 days, 949 South Illinois Route 59. Fan doing businesses, Zen Spa, 949 South Illinois Route 59. A new business in the same location, another suspension. Fan, 2019, um, they're 14-day suspension. There were a number of individuals living at the unit. There's been several complaints about 377 South Prospect. You're aware of the arrests that took place at Streets of Bartlett, at 140 Bartlett Plaza. Uh, that was an original licensed corporation, sold the business to a gentleman, did not get a new massage establishment license. They had the incident that you're aware of. Uh, based on that, uh, that entity created LLC, applied, and we denied it based on the incident that took place. That, uh, denial was September 23rd of '21, and on, as of 10/1, the, that owner, business owner, a tenant within that unit, sold the business to another massage establishment, MT Tang Spa Inc., uh, doing businesses, Shatay Massage. They, as of yesterday, had their lease, got their ducks in the row in terms of what they need to do there. So the village has some very restrictive licensing requirements, but as you can see with these incidents, we shut them down, they sell the business, it happens again and again. We are not alone. Many municipalities have this issue. So this was a solution that staff came up with, and we believe it's defensible because of, you know, the overall percentage when you look at the case laws. There's a Cook County versus Renaissance bookstore, and, um, there it was, you know, percent, the court looks at the percentage of permitted acreage in Cook County, in square miles of unincorporated property. And in that case, it was 5.7%. In this case, Bartlett, if you look at the OR and you look at the PUDs where OR is allowed, it's 1.85% and 2.35% if you back out the forest preserve property. That's what courts sometimes look to. But in that case, they only had a six-month amortization that could get extended to a year. They did not have what we're proposing, which is permitted as a right, as an accessory use to certain principal uses that Reverta just talked about. And further, um, the amortization cases, there isn't exactly a bright line test, but they go anywhere from, the court has walked through in a recent case, that, that case in particular, that went anywhere from six months to five years. We think that the five years, the courts look at those on a case-by-case basis, and they weigh, you know, the, uh, the government interest, uh, that is presumed valid, and they look at the loss to the owner. In this case, it's almost always to the tenant who's invested in the build-out of the property. And that's partly why they sell, they have a going concern, or we take away the license, they sell that business. The landlords are in a little bit of a tough spot because they, you know, the tenant has approved the property, so they want the leases to be, the assignments to be consented to the new, uh, massage, uh, facility. There's also a recent case, October of 2021, that involved down zoning, and the court basically said, if you have a rational basis and you've got these secondary effects, you know, which I just listed, all the incidents that we've had over the years, that's not all of them, but, um, it's an ongoing problem. Uh, one way beyond licensing to approach it is to zone it, uh, zone it away. And we're not eliminating completely. We are reducing the areas, we think, where we have NET in an OR district. It's, we've had no problems, and so there is the ability and availability there.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I do. Well, do we require insurance? Some type of liability and malpractice?
Yes, we have pretty much licensing requirements. But in the instance that you're aware of, that you saw a police report on, uh, they didn't come in and apply for the licenses. They just sold the business, opened up shop, did not, you know, give us the insurance, apply for the license, and us do the deal with them.
The most recent one wasn't very typical.
No, it didn't.
It was, it was an atypical situation.
Agreed.
But, but the problem is, is the list of these things that have been going on since 1999. And it's not just in Bartlett, it's in a lot of different municipalities. And the same practice over and over is, um, get busted, somebody else comes in, buys out the old people, keep going. Get busted, somebody comes in, buys out the old people, keep going. And, and everybody knows that it's the same people that are buying the same unit, the same businesses. But the, the question here is, how do you create an environment where you're not trying to license it out of business? Because then it gets real technical, but we're trying to zone it into a situation that the village can handle.
I, I think it makes sense to, to restrict them basically to the office research district, the PUD districts. The, the amortization term, I see that five years is the safest way to go. I would fully support a shorter term. It's not a capital-intensive business unless you spend a lot of money on, you know, art ware and build-outs. So I, I would, I would entirely support a short, shorter amortization period.
I think you could justify, with everything else considered, a three-year amortization.
I would, I would vote in favor of that.
Did the staff talk with any, any professional license?
Here's, here's one here. Austin's license, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is, uh, Austin Hopkins, 976 South Chippendale, Bartlett. I've been a licensed massage therapist for about eight years now, and, so one thing I want to start off with is, is this is a very complicated topic, something that I've had the chance to talk to a couple trustees, and the conversations were over an hour because it is not simple and clear-cut. What this text amendment does propose is your big franchises are no longer welcome in the Village of Bartlett. Massage Envy, Element, Hand and Stone, Massage Heights are no longer welcome in the Village of Bartlett. So you're taking these big establishments, and they're not allowed here. That's the first problem. Now you're taking a licensed profession. People make this their career, and you're saying that you can no longer have a storefront establishment on busy roads within the Village of Bartlett, where you could try to drive your business and grow it. That is a concern. That is a huge concern for legitimate massage practices. Well, I want to start off, one of my themes is curtains in the windows. So why is curtains in the windows important, you may ask? You may ask, and as, as the attorney Maraz did state, that Bartlett's massage ordinance is one of the best in the States. In fact, Batavia actually looked to Bartlett's and modeled theirs after, and they actually took a step further, and they established a massage commissioner, which is tied to the liquor commissioner. So, and again, I don't know, I, you know, I can read the text, I don't know what all that entails and what that allows the municipality to do, but maybe that's something to look into. So I go back to this, you know, great massage ordinance that has, that is there, is it being enforced? And hence, I go back to my original statements of curtains in the windows. Currently, you have two massage establishments that are violating your massage ordinance. Are there violations on them? Because they have curtains in the windows, regardless if they're open or closed, or if they're blind. That is against the massage ordinance as it stands. So if we're not enforcing that one part of it, what else is not being enforced? We don't know. I would love to sit down with staff and attorney Maraz, and we can go through applications, we can go through inspection reports, and we can identify other problems, just figure out, okay, what's going to make it a little bit more difficult for these places, and, and for all intents and purposes, these establishments that do not want to practice massage, they want to practice another type. So what, let's figure out a way, a solution, be like, you know what? We're going to have more inspections. We're going to make sure that your hot water's working. We're going to make sure that the sheets are kept in a, of area where it's contaminant-free, such as a cabinet. These are all things that are already put in place in your massage establishment, and guess what? It already states in there that a village representative can come in and inspect at any reasonable time. It's already there. You don't even have to amend anything. Inspections can take place. Doesn't say how often these inspections can take place. Massage establishments are different than your normal business license. They are more regulated, and you can even take it a step further. Other municipalities require every employee to have a state ID on them or some type of identification. It can be asked, where's your identification? Great. Oh, so you're, you're, you're a therapist here? All right, cool. Well, let's check our log. Oh, nope, sorry, you're not on our listing. They require having the massage therapy license displayed. There's so much more that can go in there. And now, so that's just one part of the topic. Now let's go into the other part of the topic, what's the problem, what, what's, uh, an issue with this text amendment. There are exemptions. You're exempting chiropractic offices, you're exempting medical facilities, you're exempting physical affairs, you're also, you know what else you're exempting? Beauty salons, nail salons. Because within their own license, they can practice massage. So what's to say? Oh, okay, you're going to shut us down? Great, I don't need your establishment license anymore because now we are in salon, and I can have massage in the back. You can no longer regulate what signage they put in the windows, you can no longer regulate curtains in the windows, certain type of advertisements. So let's focus on what's in our ordinance, let's create a checklist. You wouldn't have an electrical inspector going inspect plumbing, would you? I, I don't think so, probably not, because they probably don't know what they're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Austin. We appreciate your expertise, and we know that you know the rules, and I think we brought you in some time ago when we had this original problem with another massage therapist and-
And I, well, we had the opportunity to not be in this complicated manner.
I would-
And, and then, let's use Massage Envy as an example, I, I don't, because it was brought up. So if Massage Envy wanted to open up a facility, they could, they, they are within their legal rights to file an application for zoning relief.
But-
Even under this amendment, they can come in and, and ask to change the rules.
It would have to be in the OR district, and I think what Austin is saying is they don't go in OR district.
Right, because it's not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make economic sense to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe not. Um, I will say, Austin was instrumental in the prior draft of the, uh, regulations that we have, and there we were trying to close the loophole of Asian bodyworks and other bodywork petitioners. And we still require, and they would still be in place, our massage establishment- And we still require, and they would still be in place, our massage establishment regulations that require the businesses to get a Village of Bartlett massage establishment license. We can't regulate the, uh, massage therapists themselves because that comes from the state. What they also did was, we were looking at all these details on how you determine, we, at the time in our current ordinance, we said, we issue Asian bodyworks practitioners license or prac- or bodyworks practitioners licenses. And the state has subsequently preempted us from that and said, you don't get to do that anymore. We're going to take over the practitioners licenses like licensed therapists. That being said, um, we still require, if they're going to offer bodyworks services, that the business itself has to get a Asian bodyworks or bodyworks establishment business license. But we have those overlaying on top of this, but, you know.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm here. So does anyone want to make any?
I, I would just make a suggestion that we, that we push this a little bit more to another committee just because I think there is some topics that we need to iron out. This was the first bite at the apple and it was a huge apple and there's a lot of moving parts with this. Um, I would make a suggestion that we push it, we talk about it on another committee. We have a little bit more time to digest all this information.
Agreed.
I agree.
That's a good idea. So we'll forward this on to another committee meeting. That's all we have under, uh, building and zoning.
Yeah, and then, then I would, maybe we can suggest that, um, we kind of work on, you know, opening up it a little bit more. Um, look into what it would take to get a Massage Envy or one of those places and then see how we can massage our restrictions in zoning.
No funny intent.
Yeah, massage, yeah, we can.
Well, I, I have a suggestion also. Uh, what, uh, what Austin talked about this evening, you know, obviously he worked on the first ordinance cooperating there. I'd like to see if there could be some involvement in this part on this also. Sure, but, uh, I'd be happy to do that. But that is, um, and we will look at that. But trying to attract the franchises, you know, the legitimate. We cannot discriminate against other types and only require, you know-
Right. We, we can't, we can't write the ordinance so that Massage Envy can get in, but a competitor can't.
You can't do that.
So tha- then that's one of the, that's one of the problems. I, I understand many of the points, but you can't say, well, we're only going to let good people in and the bad people need to go away. You can't articulate that.
I, I totally get that, but, but you can write the ordinance based on the fact that something that looks like this apple and this looks like this apple are both qualified, right? So-
Do the current businesses, does this would impact no? Like, did we reach out to them?
They will now.
Yeah, because I feel like they might have some good inputs. Like, if they're legit and good businesses, maybe they'll have ideas.
May I ask, what's going on with the massage parlor that, uh, was open?
That's the one I spoke of.
Yeah.
Uh, there is a new owner that bought it. They didn't have their ducks in a row on the lease. If they had done a lease, an assignment and then a subsequent assignment, uh, it is now a new lease between the landlord and the new owner and it is set to receive a license, uh, at one forty Bartlett Plaza.
Yeah, but they, but based on what trustee Ranky said, if we move forward with this ordinance, they would have three years then, if we change it from the five to three years.
Five or three, you know, whatever, or the time.
Yeah. Could you amend it so that other businesses or any business that wants a massage table would have to go through the process rather than carving out certain businesses to be exempt?
No.
Because I, I somewhat agree that it's very easy for somebody to put a nail facility in the front and have an operation through the back.
Well, the one-
And I feel that if you could somehow regulate businesses having a massage table, utilizing that as an example of their business practice and how they want to operate, they would have to come in and get a special use to put that massage table in.
But in terms of zoning, special use, when you're talking about exclusionary zoning and it gets challenged, the courts don't give you credit for your special uses. They want to know where it's permitted as of right. And they look at, you know, the total acreage or square miles of your municipality and the zones in which you allowed it, and they look at that. And they actually look at them on a case-by-case basis, but where, that's why we're, um, we arrived at where we did. So that all makes too much sense, you suggested.
It's very tricky, um, as many of us have discussed. So if we can do that, we can send you guys back to work a little bit more, Brian and, and staff. Like I said, it was a big hairy thing you were tackling there and trying to figure out the best way to do it. But I think I have, uh, I agree with some of what, um, the experts Austin had mentioned and I also agree with some of the stuff we're trying to fix here. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can, uh, move this off and we'll do another committee in a couple weeks and try to jump on it again?
Absolutely. Good idea.
All right. I move to adjourn.
So I'll move second, second.
Move by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Danny. And just before we call the roll, we'll be, um, we will be adjourning to executive session to discuss sale of village-owned property pursuant to section two C six of the Open Meetings Act. We'll also be discussing in that executive session pending probable or imminent litigation pursuant to section two C eleven of the Open Meetings Act. You can call the roll now.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Danzy?
Yes.
Gunskeen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yeah.
Swansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session.